Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll call the December 18th Select Board Meeting to order, our last meeting of the year. We have a couple of changes to the agenda under the Public Hearing section. We are going to move number nine to be first, and number eight has been withdrawn for this meeting. Other than that, we'll accept the agenda. Announcements?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Reminder that the Select Board Meeting is being audio and video recorded. Town offices will be closed on Wednesday, December 25th, in observance of Christmas Day, and on January 1st, 2020, in observance of New Year's Day. So that means the next Select Board Meeting will not be until Wednesday, January 8th, 2020. And there will be a public hearing regarding the proposed FY21 general fund budget on Wednesday, January 8th, at 6 o'clock PM here in this room. And that is all.
Do you have a hazardous waste update? Did you have a hazardous waste update?
I do not. Oh, I think Rob does.
Sorry.
Yes, no problem. Quickly, the Household Hazardous Waste Day that was canceled this past Saturday has been rescheduled for Saturday, January 11th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any public comments this evening for anything that's otherwise not on our agenda for discussion? Yes? Please come to the mic.
Hello, my name is Jasper Young. Thank you for hearing me tonight. I've...
You can lift that if you want to.
I've written a statement here that I'd like to read. I'm here tonight as a concerned citizen following the recent violations by the Scanset Beach Preservation Fund of their Conservation Commission permit. As you know, the Concom recently issued an enforcement order against the SBPF for their use of contaminated sediment to nourish the geotubes on Scanset Beach. Not only does the material they have been placing on the geotubes and on the beach contain debris, excuse me, such as old bricks, rocks, and pipes, but the Concom is also having them test it for possible chemical and biological contamination. The Select Board represents the citizens of the town as owners of portions of that beach, and I'm hoping that you can acknowledge and address these issues at one of your upcoming meetings. I would like to know if these violations of state and local regulations will affect their ability to use the public beach going forward. Many people have been following this and attending the Concom's meeting, and as the town is leasing this land to SBPF for their use and stewardship, I would like to hear these egregious violations acknowledged and addressed by the Select Board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Carmen Kaler. I'm here on behalf of the Nantucket Island Chamber, and I just wanted to say thank you to the town for making the Nantucket Noel event so successful. We really couldn't have done it without you, from Stroll Weekend tree lighting, from DPW taking and putting up 155 trees for us, along with the MPD making sure that the roads were blocked off on time and that everybody stayed safe through these events. So, from what we've heard, thank you so much for helping make these events the most successful yet.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments this evening? Okay, hearing none. There is no new business that I'm aware of. We do have one set of minutes for approval.
Move approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Payroll and Treasury warrants?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Approval of pending contracts. Are there any questions?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have some consent items.
Madam Chair, can I move to approve 1 through 4? Consent items?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Citizen departmental request, Public Works.
Good evening. Rob McNeil, DPW Director. I want to talk to you briefly about a exciting project that DPW has been partnering with a number of folks in the community. We've had a contingent of Worcester Polytechnic Institute students here all fall, working with us, to bring this project to bear, which is essentially a waste receptacle sculpture. What you're looking at behind you here is a project that's looking to come to Surfside, near the concession area, opposite the concession area, next to the bike parking enclosure. The center section of the proposed sculpture would be the traditional wooden waste receptacles that we have installed at a number of other beach locations, consolidating waste in their picture there, the standard waste enclosures. And those would be consolidating the existing receptacles that are located over by the concessionaires. The head and the tail of this sculpture would essentially be some sort of wire mesh that would be able to look inside the whale sculpture to view collected and static display of coastal litter. The intent here is to both manage our existing waste streams that we typically pick up at these concessionaire locations, as well as provide a place for people that collect beach litter in a way that works with our current operations. It would be a seasonal situation here, June, July, and August, raise awareness of coastal litter, and at the same time, things kind of fell together with NRTA as well, and the fluke of the tail would serve actually as a shade and weather shelter over an existing bus stop. So, it really hits on a real whole number of different pieces here. We do have a local artist, Billy Sherry, here present tonight also, if there's any questions. But we did receive HDC approval Tuesday, last Tuesday, on this project. So, looking for board's input, feedback, and support. Go ahead.
Does the structure stay there year-round?
No, this would only be intended to be in place in June, July, and August.
Okay, so it's all clipped apart or it's movable?
Correct. Yep.
Who pays for it? Who builds it, who pays for it?
That's a great question. So, right now, the wooden enclosures are all part of DPW's budget and something that we would normally handle. The steel pieces, the head and the tail, are actually being funded through a generous grant from the friends of David Ozias, who've been running events in his memory for many, many years. Right now, the funding for this is expected to come forward to the board for an accepted grant at some later meeting.
Full support of this. We got HDC approval, so we've done a little bit of due diligence there. It's a great, fun way to raise awareness in litter and trash for kids, for adults, for visitors, for local year-rounders. And it won't just be this, there'll be other outreach attached to it. I've kind of flipped through the WPI report. They had four students kind of work on this for 10 weeks, and I think it's been thought through, there's been a lot of work on it, it's funded, it's been passed by HDC. So, I think it's great. And we have a local artist that's going to, you know, with Billy doing it, so I think it's a win-win.
Yeah, I'm completely in support of this. I just want to be sure, like, DPW will be taking care of cleaning it out and everything.
Sure. So, right now, the plan would be that we would be involved with, probably from the get-go, with Billy, but at the same time, we would be installing and ultimately maintaining all the receptacles through the summer. Typically, and just so you folks know, we typically are out there up to three times a day managing all the different wastes, and so that would certainly continue through the season. Again, it would be intended to be seasonal. We would, we believe, with the funding that's been offered, there would be sufficient funds into the future to maintain any of the pieces that would ultimately need maintenance beyond the standard DPW wooden enclosure sections, and we'd work together to get that installed annually.
Will there be something in recognition of the David Ozias funding that's being provided and...
Yes, there is.
For the artist, Billy Sherry?
There's a sign that would be located under the tail that you could view from the bus stop, essentially, that talks a little bit about the project, raises awareness about coastal litter, as well as the memory of David.
Excellent.
I attended the meeting when they presented this, and the one thing, and I'm in favor of it, but the one thing that kind of struck me is I remember doing stuff for, like, you know, Boy Scouts, and when you had a project, you didn't draw the project and hand it to somebody else to build, you would actually do the project, you'd draw the project up, and then you'd complete the project. And so, it was just kind of funny, I looked at it, because, and the reason I'm sort of joking, but they were like, "Oh, we can design four or five more," and I'm thinking, "All right, great, we'll design a bunch more and we'll have, you know, Rob run around and build them as fast as he can." You know, I think that, you know, part of the, in the future, I would love to see the students who do it be working with Billy Sherry and whoever to actually follow through and build something. You know, there's more than just paper. You know, there's things, you have to use your hands and do things, I think that's important, but that, you know, I'm in favor of it, but, you know, my kids went to lighthouse school, and they use their hands a lot, so...
So, and it's a good point, Matt, I think, coming, I would say, if I could speak for the students, I'm guessing that their semester is too short, and that they would love to see this through and learn how to do some, you know, stainless steel welding and that sort of thing. To that end, you know, this is a project that was brought to WPI as a potential, so we're happy to see it through.
I think in fairness to the WPI project where they actually sorted trash at the landfill, I think they've definitely shown when the opportunity is there, they do get their hands.
Oh, no, and I like what they've done. I'm just, I'm commenting on, "Oh, we can do this and that and give you all this to do," and I'm thinking, you know, the DPW has enough to do, they don't need to have a bunch of people come and tell us more things to do, we've got a lot of priorities. That was all. It was, I'm not belittling them at all, I'm not saying they're not doing a good job.
Do we want to vote endorsing this?
I think so, yes, please.
I'd make a motion to approve, to approve the trash disposal coastal litter display.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you for your support.
Next up, we have the Conservation Commission vacancy. There are four applicants, and I believe they're all here, so if you, any of you or all of you would like to take turns coming up to make a brief statement, or... Oh, yes. Shawn Perry, Julie Jordan, Marshall Beal, and Douglas Seehom.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name's Shawn Perry. I'm a year-round resident in Nantucket. I was born here 33 years ago. I've spent the majority of my life enjoying the outdoors, especially the swamps, ponds, and the harbors. I have a degree in biology from UMass Dartmouth, specialization in marine biology, and I'd like to get some consideration for appointment to the Concom. I think I could provide some useful information and a perspective from the, looking from the wetland out towards land, possibly. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Mark Beal, looking for an appointment with the Conservation Commission. As some of you may know, I've served on several town boards, the zoning board for six years, and the planning board for 12 years. I wrote a letter along with my application explaining my interest and my desire to be on the board. I have a strong interest in water quality and resource management, and I think I could contribute to the Concom, so I appreciate your concern.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Julie Jordan, and I'd like to be considered for the Conservation Commission open seat. I'm a landscape designer on Nantucket for 25 years, and so I find myself in front of the board frequently, and I'm a great appreciator of our open spaces and our natural areas, and I'd like to help bring balance and a knowledgeable plant person to the board. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Doug Seehom. Nantucket's been a part of my life for 42 years. I've lived here year-round for 23 years, have a background in construction, both building and excavation. I have also done projects for Land Bank and Concom, because I owned a horizontal directional drill, which I was able to do work underground without disturbing wetlands. And I would like to be considered.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all, thank you for coming. We'll be making the appointment on January 8th. Real estate items?
Before we leave that...
Sure.
One thing I would, I feel a little uncomfortable with how we've proceeded. I think we had one candidate that was, had put their application in on time, and I would like that to be duly considered on the 8th when we talk about it. I think that we asked for young people to step up, and I think that our process hasn't been great. We had a young person step up, and we changed our process, so I would like that duly considered and discussed on the 8th.
Well, we opened it up for applicants to be able to come and speak when there were two people who put in. Real estate items?
Good afternoon, Ken Bogrind, the real estate specialist. This item should be fairly straightforward and easy to move forward on. On January 30th of this year, the order of taking with respect to this property on downtown was passed unanimously by the board. It was filed with the district and the land court. The concern was is that one of the parcels is recorded land, and so the document needed to be recorded with the Registry of Deeds as well. It wasn't, and so the transaction can't be moved forward on behalf of the town. So, this is to confirm the order of taking, it was passed in January, it's the exact same order. That will then allow us to register this, record this order of taking with the Registry of Deeds, so it will then be recorded both in the land court and the Registry of Deeds, and then next month, we can come forward with the disposition of this property. So, it is my recommendation that we move forward to execute this confirmatory order of taking.
I'll speak quick. I agree with this aspect of it. I think we should, you know, finalize the taking. I think we need to make sure we're careful about the disposition. This has been coming to us, you know, we'll talk about that when we get there, but this has been coming to us for years, and I think that there's more information we're getting on resiliency and other issues that need to be really thought about before, depending how we dispose of this. But the taking part, 100%.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I hear your comments, and we'll address those when this comes forward next month.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep, moving on to public hearings, we'll jump to number nine. I know that there are people here from Harborfield, but I think that the fire chief was going to give us a summary. I'll open the public hearing.
Good evening, Steve Burfee, Fire Chief. This is a application to amend the current license to include two tanks. These two tanks would be specific to supplying the boat base and fuel dock. The timeframes on here, working with the applicants, will change a little bit to make sure that the cleaning and the safety of the tanks that will be remaining are going to be addressed. The long-term solution, this is only for one year, the long-term solution will still be worked out going forward to make sure that the boat base and the supplied diesel and gasoline for the boats down there. Well, this is kind of our first step forward here.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? This is a public hearing, is there anyone else here who would like to speak on this issue? We'll close the public hearing. It's the pleasure of the board.
Make a motion to approve?
With the conditions?
With the conditions, the most recent conditions that Chief put forward.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And now, we will be back at number one. I'll open the public hearing to consider the taking of a portion of Wee Weeder Avenue shown on parcel A on Plan of Land and Tiled Roadway Acquisition Plan of Land of a portion of Wee Weeder Avenue in Nantucket, Massachusetts.
Good morning again, or good afternoon.
Good evening.
It's been a long day. At the ATM in 2011, Article 98 authorized the taking of portions of Wee Weeder Avenue in Surfside. The other half of this section was, in fact, previously taken and then awarded to and disposed to the butter on the other side. So, the action before you today is for the taking of this for public ways and general municipal purposes, and with a view to then disposing of it to and of butter, and again, that would come forward at a subsequent meeting with respect to the action of the actual disposition. So, the action that is requested today is to proceed with the order of taking to follow through on the authority that was granted at the town meeting in 2011.
Any questions?
Public hearing?
Yeah. This is a public hearing, is there anyone here wishing to speak on this issue? Hearing done, I'll close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve? Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Now, and here's, while we're here, can you pull up GIS? Do you have the ability to? Well, it doesn't matter, if you go on GIS and look, well, if you look at GIS on Wee Weeder Ave, this is a good example, when we go to disposition, of, if we have to, we have to start thinking ahead, and some of these areas will, this is a parallel road to Nobodyer Ave into, what is it, Nonantum? It's sort of parallel. If we lose 40, 60 feet and we lose parts of those roads, this would have been, this could be a great road to connect all those homes along that back side. And the problem is, if you look, if we show where it is on the map... Yeah, you can do an aerial, that'd be great. This is like fancy. Yeah, and so, if you look at, if you look on the map, you can see Wee Weeder is where the hand is, right? And those, and on the old maps, that's a grid, and that connected all the way across. If we lose, sort of down, the bottom right, if we lose, like, the connection along here, down near the water, the next connection up for all those homes, both sides, is going to be sort of that whole row. But in the meantime, what we've been doing is, we've been yard selling those away, so if we want to get those back, you know, at some point, and I understand some of them we own, some we don't, et cetera, we're going to have to go into, you know, takings and take them back. And so, the question, and this topic came up a little bit at coastal resiliency, when we have these issues, who's thinking about them? How are we dealing with them? And are we kind of shooting ourselves in the foot right now? A lot of this is driven by the homeowners who want to have a larger yard or a larger house, and it's giving that value to those guys, and I get that, and that's great, but I think we, as a board, have to be very careful to, you know, look at these big picture and say, "Do we really want to be yard selling something that could end up having to be the connection for all these homes in the future?" And so, you know, so we are only doing the initial phase tonight, but I think that we really need to be thinking about it. And, you know, under Slutman's comment, I'll talk about, you know, coastal resiliency and them wanting to maybe have a voice in some of these, so...
Great, thank you.
Thanks. Next, we have some utility petitions. I will open the public hearing for 27 Somerset Lane.
Yes, Jim Huxley, Engineered National Grid. This one here, we're looking for the customer to install a handhole and 225 feet of conduit to service a house at 27 Somerset Lane.
Any questions? This is a public hearing, is there anyone here to speak on this? Hearing, no comments, I will close the public hearing.
Move to approve?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have another utility petition for 21 Derry Moore Road.
Yes, this one...
Open the public hearing.
We're looking for the customer to install one handhole and 65 feet of conduit to service the house, number 21.
Any questions? Public hearing, is there anyone here to speak on this? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Move to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, another utility petition along the south side of Angola Street for a 10-lot development?
Yes.
Open the public hearing.
Customer's looking to install 10-lot underground development, and we're going to install a 300-foot conduit bank on the south side of Angola Street.
Any questions from the board? This is a public hearing, is there anyone here to speak on this? Hearing, no comments, I'll close the public hearing.
Move to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, utility petition for 32 and 34 Duke's Road. I will open the public hearing. Oh, sorry, I skipped Union Street. Going back, I will open the public hearing for 13 Union Street, utility petition.
National Grid's looking to install a handhole next to the pole in number seven in order to supply, service to number 13.
Any questions?
Yeah, I was just going to say that there were more comments than usual, and a little difference, so just to make sure that they'd been noted.
Yeah, the comments seem a little stronger and more detailed than any of the others.
Do you have the comments?
I mean, I've gotten emails, but I haven't seen a sheet or anything, what they want.
Okay, so it'll just be conditioned on that.
Well, they all are, so...
This is a public hearing, is there anyone here to speak on this? Hearing, no comments, I'll close the public hearing.
Move to approve?
With the conditions.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now, I'll open the public hearing for 32 and 34 Duke's Road, utility petition.
This one here, we're looking for the customer to install 240 feet of conduit cased in concrete to feed two homes, 32 and 34.
Any questions? This is a public hearing, is there anyone here to speak on this? Hearing, no comments, I'll close the public hearing.
Move to approve? Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, utility petition for 69 Sparks Avenue.
This one here, we're looking for the customer to install 325 feet of conduit to feed the Boys and Girls Club.
Is this for the new housing?
Excuse me?
New housing?
Yeah, I think it's four homes.
The employee housing.
Right. Any questions?
I just had a similar comment, we don't usually see comments from planning, so just that, again, just making sure that they're noted.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone here to speak on this? Hearing, no comments, I'll close the public hearing.
Move to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Number eight has been withdrawn, number nine has already been done. Moving on to number 10, we're done with National Grid. Thank you. Commercial landfill, yes. I'll open the public hearing. I'll open the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you. We thought you were thinking.
I thought Erica was doing something for a minute too.
So, we're here before you to ask you to increase the landfill fees. If you remember last year, we did not actually increase it last year. The increase is 2%, which is based on the July CPI in Boston and surrounding areas. So, we're hoping that you'll favorably act on this. It'll raise less than 20,000 based on the number of bills, but we feel that we should start to raise it incrementally on an annual basis to help offset the cost at the landfill in the enterprise fund.
Any questions?
Yeah, just, will that be an annual increase of 2%?
Typically, what we would do is look at the CPI after the July, after the July update and determine from there whether it makes sense to raise it by that or something else.
I'll just make the comment I always make. This landfill fee predominantly hits restaurants and hotels and the same people that get their other things raised automatically every year. We have a whole lot of other businesses that are as profitable or more profitable that could be contributing as well, and I hope that we will consider that. You know, we are, we are very inexpensive on our building fees. We are not able to give enough services at HTC and other, other aspects of enforcement over there. There's, you know, we could do a lot if we would actually look at people other than hotels, restaurants and businesses downtown. And I hope this board, you know, has the foresight and, you know, willingness to do that.
Matt, not to single anybody out, but retail, like that kind of?
Well, no, without saying anybody, I think that our, our building fees are very inexpensive when you compare them to building fees at a lot of other places. We can't, and there's, and there's things we need to fund over there. And we continue to go back to the same well. We've been doing it for 20 years. We go back to the, you know, to the hotels and the restaurants and, you know, and and we originally had those, some of the fees originally put on the restaurants. The landfill in particular, we raised the restaurant liquor fees for the landfill. You know, 25 years ago, that was the rationale for jacking the liquor licenses back then. And, you know, oh yeah, we've, it's for the landfill. Well, now we've got a landfill fee that goes up regularly and we have other people that, they don't seem to go up at all. So, I just think there's an issue of fairness that needs to be examined. I bring this up every time we talk about fees. This is, I'm a broken record. This isn't anything new. This is, you know, an issue of fairness and there's other places that can raise fees as well that would do a lot to closing the budget that you're talking about and so.
So, I was just trying to clarify if there were some businesses that don't pay the landfill fee, but actually do, probably should, like don't pay it at all? Are you just saying in general, everything should go up?
We're talking about fees. I'm talking fees in general, not just landfill. I'm talking about, in general, the fee situation, we need to examine more fees than ones that hit a cer, you know, the, what we're hitting are the tourist, you know, the people that take care of the tourists. That we're hitting that end, but we're not hitting the other end of the spectrum and we need to look at everybody fairly. That's all.
I think that is one of the reasons that we did a greater, we changed the shift last year on the commercial taxes to be a little bit more fair, which I think was a positive direction on that.
Just to, just to make note, we are, excuse me, we have had internal discussions about those fees. So, it's not something that we are not trying to look at to see exactly what we can and can't do. So, we are looking at it.
And I think that's great. It's.
We were talking, we were talking about building department fee. As Rita had done a little bit of research to compare to some other towns and we were in discussion about that earlier today during the agenda meeting, so.
There's that. And then, sorry as well, I mean, I think even for myself, landskipper. So, I, I have a commercial business. I use, I pay for brush. But what you're talking about is businesses like that, which to be honest, would make sense to me. And are, who we're allowed to charge these fees to, is that in any way tied into our contract with waste options? Or is it up to our discretion?
I don't recall if it's actually in the contract. I think it's our discretion.
Yeah, I, I think again, with what we're seeing in the cost of running the landfill, I think capturing more of that and dispersing it across the businesses that are using it regularly would make sense.
This is a public hearing. Oh, sorry, Krista.
I was just going to add, kind of as a newbie on the board, every time we have to increase fees for like the island home or the sewer, it's always been a long jump or a big increase. And so, I think it's good to have this increase in CPI. And it's 2% each year. We're keeping up with the cost that's going to the landfill.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this? Hearing, no comments. I'll close the public hearing.
I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Next up, we have renewal of annual liquor licenses. I made a blanket disclosure when I first started doing these, just that we do, my, my husband's business does do laundry for some of these restaurants, but it's so spread across the whole island that.
I think it's just a disclosure.
And I haven't filed.
I just like, I just like to say it again.
I haven't filed one yet, so I'll just sit out. I will.
So, thank you. This is a renewal of all annual business license renewals. As a licensing board, it is the vote to renew. Just to, before we get into discussion or any public comment, just to review kind of what this is. It is the renewal for licenses, like you mentioned, annual liquor, convivial, entertainment, motor vehicle sales, motor vehicle rentals, open air parking, mobile food units, flour produce, shellfish vendors. This does not include seasonal liquor licenses that operate April 1st, January 15th. We do that in March. However, those establishments that do have entertainment and convivial are included in these lists, but their liquor portion is not. And as I mentioned, we recommend approval of renewal process. All these categories are required to meet specific conditions of their license and pay all associated fees before the license to operate is actually issued. What tonight does is approve renewals of these. And again, you're not issuing the license. They still need to have their inspections, sign offs, fees, whatever's required of their specific license. So, we'll begin to issue these licenses once they complete all those steps. Tonight doesn't do that. Couple things just for consideration, again, if there's any comments. Especially when we're talking about liquor and entertainment licenses. We cannot, if anything comes up in discussion about changing any conditions of a specific license or any actions of a specific license, action cannot be taken against that license this evening. We would have to schedule a separate hearing or something of that, that sort. So, tonight is not for changing anything. You have a little more leeway as far as local licenses, as far as changing conditions. But what I would recommend, if anything comes up, that we do schedule something. All the licensees have been told they're not required to be here this evening. This is for renewal. So, anything that does come up, we would have to schedule a separate hearing to deal with any specific issues. So, any questions from there?
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak on this? Hearing, no comments. I'll close the public hearing.
Move to approve all renewals.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, four to zero. Thank you. Looks, looked like a long agenda. Town managers report?
Think Amy's going to stay right up there.
Yeah. Pull up this. So, we are discussing back to the micro mobility bicycle share pilot program that we discussed, I think, last month. What we've done, we did on, oh, good, there we go, November 20th. We discussed this and determined that we are going to go forward with a possible one-year pilot permit program. And what we kind of worked on this past month is how we're going to go about as far as an application process and then a review process, awarding the possible permit and then developing some guidelines and regulations and measurements for us to determine if this is successful. So, that's kind of what we've outlined here. And this was based on many other towns that have gone through this previously. I didn't make up anything here. It comes from somewhere. We're working with our legal folks too as well to develop memorandum, memorandum, excuse me, of understanding when we initially select someone. So, what I kind of wanted to get across here is we're looking for approval of this timeline and process that we're going through. And then we'll go through that and we still, during this review process, will be developing the final regulations and such that we're going to use. I think we need to get this information in from these applicants, understand what their business, business models are and use that to really develop the final one. So, I don't want to make it like we're going to, right now, this is the final regulations and conditions. These are what we want them to respond to, the conditions that we discussed last time that BPAC reviewed and kind of address all our concerns as far as safety regulations, as far as their fleet management, as far as all those types of things. We're going to list those conditions and then ask them in the application to address each and sing, each and every one, which is most towns have done. How is your plan of operations going to address helmet safety? Is going to address, you know, collecting different, the bikes from their different locations? Explain the geo fencing capabilities, the data collection capability, so we can understand how we can collect that for measurement and then develop our regulations from that, if that makes sense. Any questions from what we've done here so far?
I, I think you've done a great job laying it out. The, the only real comment I have is that I'd like to tighten up the timeline.
Right, so you want to explain?
And I have some suggestions.
Go, go ahead.
I'd, I'd like the applications due January 17th. I'd like to do the, the award on February 5th and I'd like the license to be fully in place by April 1.
Right.
So, that it's well before any seasonal activities start.
And so, one thing I, I wanted to kind of explain, and that's, that's fine, we can certainly do that and we'll work over the next week to get the final application done. So, we can get it out to folks by the first or before, as soon as possible. Is that the one thing I did as far as the review, we can select certainly an applicant after the review by the 7th, absolutely. The one thing I want to consider is the final vote being what our MOU is going to be, what those regulations are. I think that's why I made it a little bit later, that we can select sooner and then work with them to make sure we have everything final, that you can do a final vote on. So, I want to make sure that we have a little more time on that part.
So, if we did like February 5th to award, then we could finalize like two weeks later?
Yeah, so that, yeah, yeah. Because I don't know that we can pull off reviewing it and then making sure we get the final regulations in place. That, I think that's all I was asking for, is a little extra time on that for review in February.
Yeah, what was important to me was just to really have everything very settled way before like Daffodil.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And I think the one thing I said about May 1st was if they want, if they're ready to go right away and have everything we require in insurance in March, great. You know, that would be, to me, May 1st would be the final. You have to have all your ducks in a row by then. Hopefully, it would be earlier. But a lot of times, again, like issuing the final license sometimes takes time, whatever their time is. So, but absolutely, we can certainly do the review quicker.
Other comments?
That was my same concern, that I wanted to have it up and ready by summer.
My only comment is sometimes when we do these RFPs, we weight them in such a way that everything, you, you vote, everything gets a point total and then you're sort of stuck with the highest vote. And I just hope that if there are crucial aspects of this, such as they can't geo fence or what, you know, they don't have a, you know, a place to put the vehicles, you know, the bikes, but they, they say, and all these guys are going to tell you exactly what you want to hear anyway, or your lawyers are, if they're any good.
Correct.
And so, you know, I hope that if, you know, if we could, that we have the ability to, you know, somehow weight it and pick the one that's best for Nantucket, not the one that answered the questions properly.
Correct.
I just, we have to be very careful because that's, you know, we end up in, we end up, you know, the idea that the, that it's for, it's, you know, that you can't predict, when you do the review, we can't predict everything 100% right and we're not going to get the form right and the thing right. And I just think that if someone is predominantly answering everything right, but they just, you know what I'm saying?
Right, yeah, correct. And one thing I wanted to point out is, is per legal, this isn't a traditional RFP process. So, it does not have to follow those procurement, you know what I mean? So, I think we have a little more flexibility in how this goes. We want to make sure we understand what we're going to use as measurement, what things that we're not going to accept if, you know, if we have ways to, like we would in another license, bring them in in the middle of May and go, you know, this isn't working correct or what's going on. So, those things need to be outlined, but we don't have to follow that as strictly as we would for like Jetties when we did that.
Because there are some, there are some of our, some of the things that we're worried about, such as where is they going to park the bikes and how are they going to get them there? And how, you know, is, all those, there's certain things that are more important than others that we really,
Correct.
we want to make sure we've got those.
I think we have a little more flexibility in that sort of sense too. And that, you know, if they're going to be staging them in certain places in private property, similar to MFU, we need to have a location agreement, things of that sort. So, I think we have some models in that too as well.
Question. Amy, if, if we had talked about, just in passing, setting this up similar to food trucks?
Correct.
Not, you know, geo fencing a parking area, you know, when, when you're not using them so many feet from a current bike shop, something like that. Is that, will that work with this and?
Well, I think, you know, initially, we've had some disagreement as to whether that is enforceable and how that would work in this instance, because a normal bike can be left anywhere. It's, I understand it's the staging of them and being able to pick them up if it's across the street from.
And how, how do we know if it's not parked there while they're paying for it, using it versus parked there and left it for the end of the, you know, and for somebody else to pick it up, right? So, that, it gets a little tricky.
And that's, those types of discussions I think we can have as far as when we're setting up what the parameters are after, you know, selection and different things of that sort, where the agreements are for where they're going to be picking them up. We're going to be working with legal a lot. They've, they've drafted a lot of these agreements. In that sense, whether we can legally do that in this instance. And I think we need to understand the technology a little bit better and understand what they're bringing to the table too as well, because this is all new for all of us. You know, I'll say from our attorneys and there's been some discussions with other towns like Provincetown, their pilots, several failed after the first year because it was not profitable. So, we're trying to, they had 150 bikes. We're kind of going around 100, but we want to see what these plan of operations are. And then something like that would be a discussion at that time.
Yeah, I think the board needs considering, this is the thing, we've got really into the details of BPAC, is trying to make the balance of adding this as an alternative transportation, making it really useful, helping it be successful, but not hurting the current bike shops. And so, and thinking through who's this for? Is it the local commuter? You know, is it somebody that's coming around with a boat? You know, and that, so we're just trying to think it through and make sure there's a nice balance across the board.
I think some of it, hopefully some of that will be addressed by, they're going to give a map and say, this is where our bikes are going to be staged. And they can, we can agree if, if the license says they have to be staged here, they have to be staged here.
Correct.
If they turn around and, you know, and get a private person to give them a space right in front of the bike shop, then we can say, wait a minute, that wasn't what you represented on your license. So, I think we should have, I think you're, we should have it in there, that the goal isn't to, you know,
Yes.
to, you know, scoop business from the existing, it's to provide a different service. I think that should be front and center. We should ask for what we want.
Yeah, I think that's, that's been part of the requirements, the math and outlining that similar again to the mobile food units, we need to have location agreements for these private property locations and it needs to be absolutely mapped out. That's part of the application too. So, and, you know, we have to determine too, who will be reviewing this and what kind of committee we want to do that for, whether it's in front of BPAC or a select board member. So, you know, that feedback is appreciated too as well.
There's a lot of unknowns. We don't know who it's going to help and who it potentially could hurt. Well, potentially, we can think of who might hurt, but we're, you know, BPAC, we really got into the, kind of the details of, of the regulations and what we'd want to put in the license and wording. And where it gets confusing is where, when you're parking it. You know, we're trying to find the right terminology of, of non-use parking or after-use parking. Where do people leave it when they're done with it? Not whether, they can leave it anywhere when they're using it. That's what we want them to do. And so, trying to figure out wording, so everybody understands it and the public understands it.
And the issue isn't, we have public racks. So, these guys can come in and fill up all our public racks with for-profit bikes, because then there's nowhere for anyone else to park. We're having trouble finding enough parking for the existing people coming to town. So, that's why it's really important that they have places where they, they park. And now, when it's under a rental, sure, people can park wherever they want. But when the rental's over, it should be back in the, you know, in the designated area. Otherwise, we're just handing over public bike racks to private companies and, you know, wondering why we don't have any space, so.
See, don't we kind of do that now? I just want to get out there. If somebody rents a bike from one of the bike shops, they still use our public racks.
Which is completely fine.
That's, okay, I just wanted to make sure you're okay with that.
But you don't have a bike shop staging all their bikes in our public racks. There's a difference. Yeah, so that's the tricky part is, because when, when some of the first presentations we had was, these are going to with some of the first presentations we had was, these are going to be great, they're going to be everywhere, you're going to just be able to get on and drive it and leave it where you want.
Right.
And it's going to be great. They're going to be everywhere. And that's sort of when you, you look at that with sort of Lime scooters and some of the other things that have happened, Lime bikes. In some places, it's been a mess. They've been left all over the sidewalks and we don't have enough space as it is. And so that's why we're moving slowly on it. You know, so.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering what towns you came across that did have successful programs and how long they've been around?
Um, you know, I think the one we were looking at, um, is that we use a guideline, is it Lowell? Um, oh yeah, Lowell, which I, you know, kind of put some of their ordinance there in Massachusetts. I kind of talked to some places out in California too as well. I think what's tough is, you know, Province Town being a, a community is close to ours as we can probably measure in a similar type of bike thing, and that didn't go well. Um, and other small towns in Massachusetts, um, it's going to depend, obviously California, whether you're going to have a longer period of time in the year. And it's a lot of different places where they're looking to connect people from different modes of transportation when they need to kind of connect that. So this, right now, as far as just a resort area that has a lot of bikes right now, I mean, we don't know. Um, we have to put some measurement in there and certainly we're looking for, for these applicants to tell us what they kind of view as successful, is what they need to be successful and kind of go in between and decide what works for both. But I think right now, it's, it's so new everywhere.
Rita, some of the things that I've been, been thinking about and reading how other communities do it is, if someone can, not everybody, but somebody could hop on a bike and not take an Uber or not take a taxi. It's not just against, um, just, you know, other bike rentals, you know, it's people, getting people out of cars. So it kind of goes in with a lot of our goals, our strategic planning. But how do we set it up to where it affects that?
Yeah.
And that's kind of what we've been taken into.
We can see, I think we've discussed this, we can see, um, locals and possibly staff downtown, restaurants, things of that sort. And I want to get an Uber late, wanting to get a bike and do that. We can see that community actually using it.
Yeah.
Maybe more so even the tourists. So that could be.
You might take the bike in when it's light out and then have another way home when it's dark out.
Correct. And that might be more cost efficient and something they'd rather do. So that's kind of where I'm seeing it being successful too.
In the direction things are going is people want quick and fast and I want to use my phone. I don't have cash and, and I don't, I don't, maybe I don't want to do an Uber, but I can hop on this bike and it's quick after you figure it out the first couple of times. So people will pay for that.
Great. Now I'm looking forward to seeing how it works out.
So are we, are we okay with the time, the timeline that I suggested?
So we'll amend that timeline and work over the next week to get the final application up and ready. Um, we'll share that with you as well and, you know, see how it goes. I know we have applicants ready to go, so seems reasonable.
Public hearing.
Well, it's not a public hearing, but.
Oh, it's not.
I mean, if anyone from the public would like to speak on this, they're welcome to.
I was still in public hearing mode.
But it's actually not a public hearing. And I mean, we're kind of ready to take a vote, but if you have something you want to say.
That's what happens when you have 25 public hearings.
Thomas Holt, Bayberry Lane. Um, I'd like to see if the, uh, committee would be open to expanding it from just a one-year pilot program to at the very least a two-year, just for data collection and to help the town kind of, you know, collect the proper, uh, proper information, so we can actually move forward in this, become a successful program. That's kind of all I want. See if you guys can look into that.
I don't want to put the, uh, chief procurement officer on the spot, but I don't think we can by state law. I think that would have followed chapter 32B, we'd actually have to bid it. A pilot's a little different.
Right.
Yeah.
Jasper Young, obviously I have a vested interest in being, um, privy to, uh, how this process moves forward. There's been a lot of talk about, um, collecting data and I wonder what kind of data you're looking for and how you plan to collect, uh, collect it. So are we, are we thinking this will get 150 cars off the road? How do we collect the data to make sure we know that the pilot program is successful? Thank you.
I think we're still in the process of figuring that out. Um, I'm going to need, you know, legal advice on how we do that and what we can do. We're basing it on pilots before as far as, obviously, we're going to need to know the technology and the certain bikes and what, you know, they can collect as far as, you know, what they're renting and that sort of thing. And some of it's going to be, you know, the experience with it, whether we're getting calls a lot, whether it's causing any sort of issues in the town. We're going to have to determine what those points are that the town needs to know for it to be successful as well as the vendor. So I don't want to be very specific just yet. We're still learning about all of these and the technology part, I might not be able to speak on as well. Um, but again, we're working with our legal team as far as getting that up and running. Okay.
Do you want to speak further?
Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, as much data as possible, just similar what we do with NERDA. How many rides, like when, when the, you know, what days of the week are the best? And, and NERDA's easy. We, we know where they go and which routes are the most popular. But I'm, I'm really curious of where people, you know, they, they, they grab the bike and where do they go with it? Where do they leave it? Like, that'll be really interesting to see where people use these bikes. And will it take 150 cars off the road? It, it, you, you never know. I mean, is a car off the road? Obviously, if you're taking NERDA, it's a car off the road, but I don't think it's one for one.
It'll also give us the data to decide where to put, um, bike paths, if we're seeing a lot of roads being used that don't currently have bike paths.
I'm, I'm hoping it also gives us an idea of if there's peak times. And again, how we can maybe look at that, how that translates into some of our other alternative modes of transport. Um, just, we are requesting this information from the vendor and that's public information.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, it's going to depend on, we want to know the bikes you're using, excuse me, the technology in those bikes and what they can reasonably collect as well.
Yeah, like a lot of them have the GPS and they track where their bikes go and they know where they are. And, you know, some of it is just a download. It's a link. And so you can link and put this in. I think, I think we, I think BPAC are in from help with some of the people we've talked to. I think we've, there's a sp- specific, uh, you know, program that's used in a way they do it. So we've asked for that.
And, and Madam Chair, it's similar how we started the valet service, um, exact same pilot. We didn't really know what data we wanted to collect, but it came with the, the vendor who had some ideas and then exactly what Rita was saying, started to learn about like best times or locations and then we, we built on that.
Yeah. And, and we'll be bringing this forward at public meetings a few more times. Do we want to motion?
I had a question. Um, it says in the notes that most communities, they've just been entering, the businesses have been entering and then asking for forgiveness later. Would this timeline, like are we protected for nobody else to enter the market while we're doing this?
I believe so. I don't know if I want to make that legal comment. Again, that's why I'm referring to legal doing that. Um, I think this is a way to get ahead of it in the way most communities have gotten ahead of it, instead of obviously it happening and then being some sort of mess they have to deal with. So I think if we set this up and have actual regulations or guidelines in place, like we did when mobile food units came along, that does protect us in that instance. Cause you, I think it's if you don't comment on something, it's somewhat allowed in a sense, but once you do and set that up, that gives you a little bit more protection.
Okay.
Yeah.
It should be in the best interest of the business to work with the town, to be in partnership.
Especially with public spaces being used in that sense, yeah.
Is there a motion? Greg?
I just want to also stress too, kind of jumping in on here, but if the pilot's successful, I do believe that next year we do have to RFP for it. So it's, although there's a leg up on the vendor, it's kind of like the valet. The first year of the valet, um, was successful, but we RFP'd and the team that did the valet the first year didn't get the bid. Just want to get that out there.
I'd make a motion to approve the recommendations, uh, with the amended timeline.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Me opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Amy, thank you. That was a lot of work in a short amount of time. It was something that we don't know much about. So thank you.
Okay, we are moving on to select boards' reports and comment. And we've got the review of the general fund budget recommendations.
So this is on the agenda in the event that since last week, anybody has any comments, questions, anything like that? And if you do, we're happy to try to answer them. And if you don't, then this will, um, we have a public hearing, as you know, scheduled for January 8th. And that would be the time when the board would endorse the budget recommendations, either modified or as presented. And then heads off to FinCom. And, you know, of course, we may be back to you after that, depending on what may or may not come up. And there might be some outstanding items that won't even be ready yet by the 8th that we would want to come back to you for, like finalization of free cash recommendations probably. Um, there's the kind of outstanding issue of some of the citizen warrant article requests, things like that.
Any questions or comments from the board from the last meeting?
No, my only comment is, I think that we just did a really good job juggling that we're a growing kind of city and we also are being cautious that we might be on a horizon of a downfall. So I think that the town did a really good job of juggling those two things.
Thank you. Um, I also should mention, we went to the school committee last night to present this budget. Uh, Dawn was with us, um, myself, Greg, Brian and Ally. And they had, um, a little bit of question about some of the numbers, which I think that Brian answered. They wanted to know a bit about when or if an override would be recommended. And we told them that would probably happen possibly on the 8th, but it could happen at a later time too, because, um, that will actually end up potentially in a finance committee motion. And I don't think they had too much other stuff. They did ask about, um, and we had, we have previously had a group set up called the Ad Hoc Fiscal Work Group. It has the chair and vice chair of select board, FinCom and school committee. And we didn't have any meetings of that group this year. And it wasn't really because we didn't want to or we ignored it. It was more that we kept thinking, we got to schedule that meeting and it just really got away from us. The school mentioned that in accordance with some kind of, what was that, Brian? Some kind of study or plan or program that they're trying to get into, that there is a, um, recommendation and whatever this thing is for an ad hoc budget or group-like group. So they, they were very interested in getting that group back together. So we said we'd really make that a priority for, um, fiscal 22. And maybe we have a kind of a wrap-up after town meeting.
Anything else? Okay.
Good. I, I, I did it. I attended the school committee, so.
Just a general comment. I, I think we're trying to put in place a process and I think as much as we can get departments and individuals to not try to circumvent the process, the better we will be. Uh, I think some of this sort of going to town meeting as a single entity is, uh, you know, gets, it gets, it, it, people will get tired of it and will vote everybody down. And so I think we've got, you know, I think we, we have to really kind of discourage that. And, and I don't, you know, I don't know what, how that, how we do that, other than try to include everybody through the process like you have done and, you know, sort of, but.
That is a very good point. And that was one of the initial reasons for the establishment of that group. So we just got to get back to it.
The one, I'd say the one item, I think it's, uh, Ian's item. I think one of his items requires money. I would like to be able to find a way to move something around for that. You know, he had an item with, regarding biking that is important. So I would like to, I don't, I don't have the answer to that now. I haven't put time into that. But that's one thing that I know I'm thinking about.
Yeah. And we haven't really gotten into the cost impacts of any of the citizen warrant articles yet. So I think there's a couple that would potentially have some cost impacts.
Well, if we're putting stuff out there, I do want to increase the human services budget. The money that's going, that, um, goes to CRC. Um, there's just, there's been dramatic increases in the use of services, I think, because they've done a better job getting out what's available to people. And, um, and the community has needs.
And I think if we do that, we have to find that from somewhere if we're going to do that. And, but I think again, it should be sort of, it should be within a process, not individual groups from there doing it themselves, I think.
Right.
You know, and so I, I'm.
We haven't had an increase in a few years.
And, and that's one that would be great to go up 2% a year and just say that, you know, it's sort of, anyway. So.
I'd like to see the, um, the money we bring in from marijuana be brought in from substance abuse to, um, substance abuse and mental health, um, or maybe even a little bit broader than that. But, um, I think that could be a potential source for, um, for that increase.
I'm glad you brought this up, Madam Chair. I think, um, if we could, if it makes sense, and I know, um, Brian, Libby and FinCom are going to, you know, dig into all of this, but it's, uh, using free cash to get it up to, you know, 600 or 650 and then looking at the font, because it's a one-year term, right, to bring out a free cash. And then plot marijuana, uh, the money coming from Sandbar could go to the CRC versus a specific entity. I think there's two or three things we could find that could cover that 150 or 200 grand to increase CRC. And then, then I like Matt's idea as well, like 2% or 5% or something like that increasing. I think it has to be somewhat creative, but it buys us time to use the free cash for, for one time. But I wouldn't want to use the free cash without a plan.
Right. So that would be this year, for this year?
Mm-hmm.
Well, just, you, Rita mentioned sort of reviewing, uh, some of these articles. And I think we should be thinking, how do we, people make an expectation, like sort of, we have to make a vote on the sewer articles, for example. They make an expectation that we have, uh, sort of closely looked at those and examined them and made a determination one way or the other. And some, I think it felt like the last couple of years, we didn't really get a chance. We just, it got away, I'll speak for myself, it got away from me. And the next thing you know, we're at town meeting. And so I think it may, we may have to set up a separate night to look at some of those. I don't know how to do it, but.
I think we do have to specifically look at the sewers based on a rating system, because if we don't support it, it requires a different vote at town meeting.
Yes.
Am I correct in that? Yeah.
And we do do that, but some, I just feel like there's those. And then some of the citizens' articles and some of the planning articles have substantial financial impacts that sometimes are not understood or examined. And I look, I would want to make sure that we've set enough time aside to, you know, sort of knock them around and, you know, sort of try to figure out the unforeseen consequences of these and not just go to town meeting. You know, I think some of them are pretty, uh, you know, it's, uh, uh, different years, there's different impacts. But I just hope, you know, this thing happens so fast, sometimes I don't know if we have, uh, that I can speak for myself. I don't know if I've got a handle on all of them that I should have.
Especially with 53.
Yes. So I don't know, you know, I don't have the answer. Is it a separate night? Do we set two hours one night? Do we schedule? I don't know how we do it. Does staff give recommendations, you know, prior? Do we have time to do it? There's, however we have to handle it, but we need, it's gonna, it's gonna be here before we know it.
Any other comments? Okay. Continued review of 2020 annual town meeting warrant articles, speaking, speaking of.
That was kind of a lead-in, sorry.
So we might have a little more discussion about that as part of this item. You had in your packet an outline, I called, I called it outline number three for 2020 annual town meeting. And what I had done is to put in bold everything that was new or a little changed or changed since you last talked about this, which was November 20th. Since then, some additional items have come in, which are now in green bold. So I'm going to just go over both of them. We have a new appropriation article. It's not really new. We did this in 2020, I believe, um, last year's town meeting. An appropriation for the senior work-off program, uh, $25,000. This is coming from the assessor and there's fund, a funding source from overlay surplus to fund this, but it's needed to get the program continued. Short-term rental proceeds. Um, we were talking about, and this is the really, um, the expanded room occupancy tax, establish a special fund for specific uses. We can do that by home rule petition or mass general law acceptance. And we're not really going to have a good handle on the number until about a year from now. So I don't know if the board would want to get a fund going either one of these ways, at the 2020 annual town meeting, wait for a potential special, or do it at the 2021. You don't have to decide that right the second, but we'll need to make some kind of a determination kind of soon, maybe at your next meeting, because it could take a little bit of time to get a home rule petition prepared, although there are models out there. And when town council was here before, he basically explained. Council was here before, he basically explained that. The difference is that if you have a home rule petition, you can establish the, establish a special fund for, you know, these specific uses, and you're not limited to how much of the revenue source has to go in the fund, and if you establish the fund through the acceptance of the available mass general law, you'll, you have a limitation that no less than, I believe it's 25% of the source of revenue would need to go into that fund, which I don't know that we would want to limit ourselves like that.
Sorry, and what we would need to decide at the next meeting isn't who's getting what, but when we're going to?
Well, you probably would need to decide that, too.
We would, okay.
Yeah, I, I don't know, you might want to think about waiting until we know how much money we're talking about, there, there are already a lot of, uh, thoughts out there by other groups about where the money should go, so.
I know that we've talked relatively specifically all along in our discussions about it, that it should go towards affordable housing and necessary infrastructure, and not, not get eaten up with other things, but, um, I don't know if everybody still feels that way.
Well, there, we, the boards, you've definitely talked about that, there also is the pending home rule petition for the, um, community housing, the community housing bill, and that is looking, um, I mean, I'm not, it's looking more promising with the passage of the Boston bill, so there's other items that are listed here on your, on your sheet that are, you know, just, everything is important.
Yeah, I feel like, um, knowing how much there is would be helpful, um, but, and probably some recommendations as to how it would impact some of the, the budgets these, or the money that we're already spending on some of these, and other possible sources, so I don't know if I'm quite right, or we'll be quite ready to, to decide that, but.
And we probably, now that it's all, it's not like the short-term rentals are really separated from what the hotel tax was, I mean, the hotel tax was already being used into the general fund, so we don't want to pull that out.
Right.
We would have to figure out the, a difference and make a separation.
Um, a quick question while we're here about the marijuana sales tax, um, right now it's specifically for substance abuse, how would we broaden that to mental health?
We would, um, just change that at town meeting.
Okay, it would be a vote at town meeting.
Yeah, I've jotted that down for, I, I don't know if that, you, it probably wouldn't be that big of a deal since the fund is already set up, or authorized anyway, to do that at the 2020 annual town meeting, if the board wants to do that. It, it's, again, similar to the short-term rental, we're, we're not really going to know, we're not really going to have a good handle on it, even a year from now, we might not have a good handle on it, because the second establishment has not, not yet opened, so it wouldn't even be a year by the time we're talking about it, but, if, if you're all pretty well committed to expanding the, the purpose of that fund to substance abuse and mental health or some, something like that, maybe we can just prepare that and have Town Council review it and have that ready for your next meeting.
I'm not sure it is even necessary, because the two are so closely linked.
Yeah.
Most people who have, uh, you know, substance abuse have, have, you know, or most people have mental health, a lot of them have substance abuse alongside it, I mean, I think it's.
I think it's a clarification, to be honest.
And maybe a clarification, because the reality is.
In, in terms of how the CRC will look at it, doling things out for specific programs, I, yeah, and because I agree, they are interrelated.
Because they're all related, why can't 100% of it just go to the CRC for the marijuana? That way it's going to the food pantry, I mean, it's going to everything, so it hits mental health, it hits substance abuse, and everything else that's connected with it. To me, that's the easiest way to do it, 100%, but, I mean, is there something?
Well, what do you mean 100%? You mean 100% of the proceeds? Some of, some of the revenue that comes in is supposed to go to the town, to the general fund, to offset the costs of having establishments in your town, and there are costs to that.
I think, yeah, 50% can go into the special fund.
Yeah, I, I think it might be a home rule petition to go higher, right.
Okay, so keep it at 50, but it's easier to change where it goes.
Right.
And so I would, so I would, I would just suggest go to CRC.
Broadening the language, um, and because it's a stabilization fund, it requires a two-thirds vote at town meeting, okay.
I, I think, um, in some ways, expanding it to mental health is more of just a point of clarification or interpretation, I think the two are so interrelated, I don't really, it's not, to me, it's not like the short-term rental tax where it's water quality or affordable housing, um, but I do think that there is, um, I think sort of the original intention of some of these taxes and opportunities for the special funds were making that direct link between marijuana, substance abuse, mental health, and having that money specifically go to those, as opposed to opening it more broadly.
Yeah, I, I understand that, but who does, you know, we decide, Town Manager decides where that goes to, it's not just ASAP, there's other things that it could go to, so that's why I give it to CRC, it's a committee, there's a process, you know, they could say, look, 50 grand came in from this revenue, we're going to take, you know, 45 of that and go to, to ASAP, or, you know, I just, I just like them deciding, because it's a good process.
I agree.
That's more kind of what I was thinking, if they decide that it needs to go to substance abuse and mental health.
I think the idea is exactly as you've described it, has been that way all along, that the, whatever the amount of proceeds is, it would go through, it would be sort of added to the Health and Human Services annual allocation for recommendation as to allocation among the various groups by CRC. We'd want to make sure that would be the process, I think.
We're almost on the same thing.
Yeah, I think it might be.
And I'm okay with opening it up, but I still think there should be a priority for substance abuse and mental health, because everything the CRC focuses on is, you know, the overall health and human services, but I think for this fund, it should really focus on the substance abuse, so maybe just have that as part of the description.
I think that's what I'm getting, again, I think we're pretty aligned, we're talking more or less about the same thing, but I think you're marking it as a recommendation that this money, we'd like to see it go specifically for these things, but it is within their, the CRC process, but, um, their process to decide where it goes.
Okay. Next, we've got other appropriation or finance-related, and there's a couple of items under there. First off, the Affordable Housing Trust appropriation, we have nothing at all appropriated or allocated for them in the budget, and my understanding is that we were not going to be doing that in '21, yeah, because of the Neighborhood First program, okay. Number two, um, Land Bank is requesting a warrant article seeking the town's full faith and credit for additional $25 million in future bonding capacity, um, I don't, they are here to speak if you need them to, and I don't know if we had any other finance information, Brian, on it. Okay, so do you want to say what they are?
Sure, um, so we've been in discussion with Bond Counsel and with Cinda from Hilltop Securities, because as you know, we already, the town has already backed debt previously, and, um, there was covenants written to try to, um, ensure protection for the town in the, what I would term unlikely event that the Land Bank couldn't fulfill the obligations of the debt, and the town had to pay it. One of the things that we actually explored, simply because all of this debt, if we were to back it, is within Proposition 2.5, if we ever had to pay it, it would be a substantial amount, um, that we may be exposed to, was could we do a debt exclusion, um, so we went to DOR and asked them, and were very promptly and succinctly told absolutely not, so, um, again, when we, um, if the town was to do this, we would, we could not rewrite the current covenant, we'd actually have to do another individual covenant for this second, for this second, um, allocation, if the town was to agree to do this, so it'd be something that we would work through with the Land Bank like we have in the past.
How far along on the, on the first one?
I can't remember off the top of my head. Do you remember how much is left, 10 years, is it?
How much debt is there?
Years in debt. Huh? 14 million.
14 million, and how many years about?
Jesse, I'm sorry, can you come to the mic? Jesse Bell on behalf of the Land Bank, um, so we pay off one, um, in 2022, we pay off another in 2027, and we pay off another in 2032, um, so there's 985,000 in, um, 2022, 4,755 in 2032, and then 8,245 in 2027.
Okay, thanks.
And so we would just sponsor this article, but it would be a discussion point at town meeting?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, I mean, we're, uh, we would love for you to support it as well, as submit it, um, and, uh, we realize that there's still outstanding questions and things to be worked out, but, um, yeah, it just allows us to be in a more, you know, borrow at a better rate and be in a, a good position to act if an opportunity comes up.
I, I'm on board with putting it on the warrant, for sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I would like to have the questions answered, but I think, you know, I, I look at what you guys are doing now as sort of our, our only real resiliency arm now, you're buying up properties adjoining the waters and in the watershed areas and things, it's really important, and I think we're lucky that that's happening, and happening as much as it has because of the things that we're going to have to be doing in future years, so I think it kind of fits with some of the things we're doing.
Yeah, I would be supportive of putting it on the warrant as well.
Thank you.
Sure.
Another item that came in was, we are going to need to seek evidently additional authorization for an additional $2 million for the septic betterment loan program, I guess we're burning through the, um, second or third loan program allocation already.
How much did we do last year? Did we do 2 million last year?
We did 2 million last year, yeah, and, you know, it gets paid back over time, so it's not really our money, so that seemed sort of like a no-brainer.
Yeah.
Uh, zoning bylaw and general bylaw amendments, there's an updated list from Planning, and their report that has been discussed about the zoning articles accompanied by narrative explanation is in progress, um, I don't, I'm not really going to know too much about the list, I think most of it has been already reviewed with the board, and there were a couple of new items, I don't know if it was talked about at Planning Commission, Matt, if you would know about them, but there's a couple that are still being drafted, there, I think most things were taken out, well, not most things, some things were taken out, there's a, um, yeah, right here, and they're, they're still working on the cannabis articles that we talked about not too long ago. So if there are questions or need for more information, we can have somebody from Planning here at the, at your next meeting.
I just wanted to say that I appreciated the, um, comments that they had, uh, the outline that they did for us.
Good, okay, I'll let them know that.
I think the, the interesting thing will be the, the citizens' articles, I think we need this similar type of thing with a little more detail, who brought it forward, you know, what's the impact, like that, hopefully the same format with a little more detail will be included on some of those, because that's the, you know, the, these, I, I look at these, and most of these are sort of the, you know, so, you know, taking RC2 and making it, you know, sort of less ground cover, well, these are the ones that are no-brainers at town meeting, the ones that are contentious are the ones that are sort of spot zoning or putting industrial next to someone's house, or, you know, taking the country and turning it into town, you know, those are the ones that some of the, you know, some of the, uh, you know, so, some of those articles, citizens' articles may be doing, and I think that needs to be very clear when we're, you know, sort of talking about it.
I think what, um, Leslie has given us with the comments, or the Planning Department has given us with the comments, is a great template, um, who would fill that out essentially for citizen warrant articles, though? Would that be Planning Department, or?
They review them all, and the FinCom waits for their review.
So they could use that same template.
Do a similar chart on what its impact is.
Yeah, I think that would be very helpful, it was great to be able to see it at a glance.
And this is great, these, it's nice to know, these are the ones that the Planning Board has brought of their own volition, the rest are brought by citizens, let's, you know, then what are those impacts? I mean, this, it's sort of, it just makes it a little clearer.
We, we dug into that a little bit, Rita, with, um, it was kind of Select Board, Capcom, FinCom, two of us all met, um, and talked about, how can we get more information from the citizen warrant articles, how can we put a kind of an application out, can't force anybody to do it, but this is what we'd love to see to make FinCom easier, to make, to make the whole process, so we can help understand what it is, can't really make them do it, you know, we'll have to ask questions during, if, you know, FinCom meeting, Select Board meeting, and then town meeting floor, but there was a lot of discussion, Libby, you were in that meeting?
Yep.
Yeah, trying to figure out, like legally, we can't do much.
Yeah.
But we looked at other towns and what, what they asked for.
And that's how that form came about, yeah.
And a lot of people did fill it out this year, which was really nice to see, yeah, not everybody, but.
Right.
But if we don't receive it, we don't, they, the, the, the FinCom doesn't have to recommend it, we don't have to recommend it, we could say we need more information, uh, you know, and, and part of it is, is having, is having the institutional memory, you want to have a, a sheet of paper that says, this is what's going to happen, here's what it is, so that we know in the future, you know, if it's just words, sometimes, if it, sometimes, if it's just words, people tell you enough until you do what they want you to do, and then you don't know why it happened and who did it, and, you know, you get 10 years out, and, well, I don't know, that was, and everyone, all of us have a different thought of what happened, you know, whereas if it's on a piece of paper, and it's, here's what we did, and here's why, then I think it's a lot more, you know, it's a lot more accountable, it's a lot more, it's a lot clearer, and there's more trust in it, to be honest.
I, I think it also helps with, um, understanding the intent behind some of the citizen warrant articles, and whether or not they actually achieve that, um, but I think also for us down the road, looking at some of the planning changes that have, um, been put in place, and understanding if they had the intention that we had with it, or whomever put it forward, so I, I do think it's good to have that information handy, so again, I do appreciate it.
Okay, the general bylaws, increased parking violation amount, it turns out we don't need a warrant article for that, that can be done by regulation, so we're going to work that into, um, some amendments to the parking regs over the next month or so. Noise bylaw, ban leaf blowers, or restrict when they can be used, or require electric only, but I didn't, didn't know what the board wanted to do with this, given that now there's a citizen article about this.
I'd like to take it out, because I think it's confusing, people won't know what's what, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Great. Okay, modify revolving funds for municipal aggregate adder uses, so this is, this is something that Lauren gave me that would allow, we, we have some, in the revolving fund bylaw, we have some specific uses for the adder, and she would like to make it more broad, so we've run it by Town Council, and it's, it would allow more flexibility for the use of that adder, which would help, um, people who want to do things like, I don't know, energy-efficient things that isn't limited to one or two, it's broader. Change all references from Board of Selectment to Select Board and other words like that, per the newly enacted legislation, and I have a draft article from Town Council to do that, and then what's come in since this is amendments to the plastics ban bylaw, we had a little bit of a workgroup meeting yesterday, and we think that there, there is a pretty comprehensive citizen warrant article on this, but our group is talking about mainly sticking to clarifications, for example, the bylaw currently says that flexible six-pack yolks will be banned, and we've encountered confusion about what a flexible six-pack yolk is, it sounds sort of simple, but, um, actually, when you start thinking about it, it is sort of simple, it is a flexible six-pack yolk, not a rigid one, not a four-pack, not an eight-pack, so we were going to make it clear that it's all flexible yolks, a couple things like that that have come up, not, nothing, um, massive, and we weren't really going to add any items in our version of the article, because we would like people to start, you know, getting used to the ban as-is, and get their behavior sort of on the right track to change before we take on a bunch more items, as are in the citizen warrant article.
Is flexible the key word, or is it just plastic?
Well, the word six.
I think it's flexible.
And flexible.
Because there's those, a hard. Because there's those hard ones that are recyclable and reusable, so they wouldn't be considered single use.
Yeah.
Are the cardboard ones considered flexible, though?
Well.
You might want to say plastic.
Compostable, they're okay, but it's, it was the, we don't want the flexible ones.
Because it's a single-use plastics.
Right, but there's ones that are made out of cardboard.
But it wouldn't fall under.
Those would be okay.
Okay, because it's under, it's called plastics as the title.
It's not a petroleum-based.
Yeah.
The confusion was more on the four and eight packs. So that was kind of the way to skirt around the bylaw.
Okay. There was a great article in the New York Times about a week or so ago about how hardly any of the plastic is recycled in the United States. It's, so the idea that it's recyclable is, you know, is kind of false. Only about, you know, 90, only like 5 or 10%, you know, get recycled of any type. And all of, and all the things I've said before, the stuff that's, you know, the compostable stuff is just as bad as the other stuff. You know, it is, it takes years and years for these things to compost or break down. We're kind of, I, 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 I understand their intent is good, but I think we're following, you know, we're following good intentions, not necessarily leading the right direction personally on this. You know, I, I don't know what the answer is yet, but I think, you know, we're trying to do the right thing, but we're spending a lot of time on something that, you know, because we think that all this stuff's recycled and there's a market for it, and isn't it great? Very little of it in the United States is recycled. It's piling up in landfills. It's not going to degrade anywhere. And so, you know, I don't know, I don't have the answer to what, what would be better for us to do, but I know that, I just feel, I, I just know, I don't know, anyway. Yeah, it's, it's sort of, in the short term, it may be burning it. And people say you can't burn it, but they've been burning it for 25 years and studying it in the Bahamas and the Bermuda, and they're using it for riffraff, they're turning it into concrete and putting in the ocean and testing it for 25 years. And they've found, you know, no problems from it. So I just think that we, you know, I, I, I hope that we are looking wide enough and broad enough at the entire picture and not at individual wrappers and plastic and, you know, so.
That's a good point, and I think we talked about this yesterday a little bit at our group. I, I think there's the use of these things and the banning of them, but what we really want to try to do is provide alternatives. So you don't, you know, you don't need a plastic water bottle. There's plenty of reusable water bottles, so, and here's a whole bunch of filling stations around. So that's sort of our way of trying to get the outreach done, is to accompany whatever the banned item is with what the alternative could be that's nothing to do with plastic, just don't get that in the first place.
And I, and I agree with that sentiment, but I just.
It's hard, yeah. I, I also think that some of the recycling, it's being stockpiled, and it's being stockpiled separately from what we would call NERNIC because there's different use, potential uses for them. I think it's a transition period. I think if nothing else, part, you know, most of this message to me is about that single use element as much as it is about the plastic. So I think having that conversation now and getting used to change, because I think all of these things are going to be changing pretty rapidly as technology changes over the next 10 years. I think we've been sort of resting on the laurels of recycling since the 80s and 90s and finding out it's false. So I think not every single alternative is necessarily better right now with the technology that we have, but I think it's still worth making the changes for single use.
So we'll have a draft for you for your next meeting, so you can actually see what we're talking about. Okay, the historical commission today gave us a proposed bylaw amendment. I haven't even read it through yet. It is pretty late. It looks kind of comprehensive to me. I don't know what the legality is about it. I don't know much about it. My concern with it is that we're just getting it now, and there's really not a lot of time to review it. The next two weeks, no one's going to be reviewing anything. And the first couple of weeks of January, we're going to be needing to spend a whole lot of time on the citizen warrant articles and other ones. So I, I don't know how the board feels about this. It, it seems that they are potentially requesting that the board add this to the annual town meeting. I don't think they, well, I don't want to speak for them, but there are, there is the possibility maybe of a special in the fall for other things, or there would be time to really understand what the impact of this is for the next town meeting, the annual. But anyway, you probably, I'll probably haven't had a chance to review it either because it came in a very late addendum to the packet.
Yeah, I haven't looked at it, yeah.
Okay, we can, just keep it on for next time we talk about warrant articles.
Yeah, I, I, I read it this afternoon when I had a chance, and, and it's a couple changes to regulations. It's not, I, I think it's a good article. I think it's something we should support, but I'd like everyone to read it and, and have a chance to look at it. I think it's, you know, it's, it's not, I think it's reasonable and good.
Okay, home rule petitions or charter amendments. I struck the charter change regarding the Board of Selectment to Select Board because that's done now. When we last talked about it, it wasn't quite done. I think, I forget if this got talked about in, in the interim, but the year-round market rate housing trust, maybe this was talked about at a different meeting. We had initially talked about the possibility of, of a, a home rule petition that would provide a model very similar to something that P-Town has, had approved. However, in talking with Tucker, he's looked at it, Ken, I think, has looked at it as well. And it, the, the conclusion, I think, is it doesn't really work for Nantucket. It works in a different sort of environment, not really so much our environment. So we would propose not to pursue that anymore.
What were the key reasons that it wouldn't work here? What were the key reasons it didn't work here?
Two key reasons. Number one, basically, the existing structure that we have with respect to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund lets us do everything, almost everything that this does. And there was one minor addition that this could do, but it wasn't very material. And the concern that we had was that you were creating confusion with respect to now having two separate funds. So you're creating duplicate administrative capabilities, duplicate issues as to where it should go and how it should go. And we didn't think it provided anything really of significant benefit because in fact, the structure that's in place we have now allows us to do virtually everything that this provided for.
That's good, thank you. Okay. Can I ask, sorry, one, one question on that? With this being year-round restricted market rate, the funding that's actually in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, I mean, tends to be restricted. So would we need to fund it in a different way to allow for this? Okay, so maybe we can, can get a follow-up on that.
Okay, potential charter amendment, home rule petition for the airport. This is turning into more of a home rule petition pertaining to capital project funding approval. I don't recall if I sent this around to you all or not, but basically it would authorize the board to approve certain types of capital project funding for the airport, and it's a timing matter. Oh, it is in there, okay, so I don't know if there's any thoughts about it, but.
I was wondering, how is that, like, who reviews, who approves for them now, and how will that help them?
Town meeting.
Right.
So their issue is timing, and sometimes they are seeking a grant, and the grant can't wait for town meeting. So if the board could approve it, then, I mean, we, we could still potentially send the projects through a capital program committee process, and maybe convene that sort of like ad hoc for airport capital projects. I would imagine we would do something like that. But basically, they are saying that they can't wait for town meeting sometimes, right, Brian? Is there anything more to it?
Yeah, this past summer, they came to a public hearing and so they missed out on a grant, the special town meeting, because there wasn't a quorum.
Oh, yes, right.
Yeah, it, essentially, they do have opportunities for AIP grants and other grants, and with town meeting in April, they potentially would not be able to start timely enough to meet the, the requirements of the grant. So it would, this really comes down to a timing issue and, and the amount, over the amount of money that they potentially are going to get in the next few years to, to do improvements to the airport.
Christie has a good point, though. That is another reason why they were asking for it, because of the challenge in getting a quorum at a special town meeting.
I think based on legal review, I would support this being in the warrant.
Okay, the town government study committee is recommending a charter change for the audit committee. I've asked them to give me a red line version because I couldn't, without going through the time to compare what we have in the charter now and what they submitted, I, I couldn't tell exactly what the changes are other than there's a change in the number of people on the audit committee, which would go from three to, I believe, five, but I'm not sure what the other changes were. Christie, do you know?
I was gonna say, it's to add the two members of the Nantucket community, I think was the two new.
So maybe it's just that one thing.
Is there anything else coming from the government study committee?
We have a meeting tomorrow and I can report back.
Okay.
The, at this point, the only other thing that I'm aware of pending them talking about it a little bit further is a non-binding ballot question, which is a little bit later about should the town move to a representative town meeting? Okay, so everybody good with the charter change on that? Okay. All right, Mass General Law Acceptance is the Municipal Water Infrastructure Investment Fund, the so-called WIF. We had previously said we need to model the impact with and without the WIF and compared the tax burden with that and the over-eyes. That's a discussion that the board had had. There's some of that in your packet from the finance director and what the impact of it would be on the tax bill. We still need to work through how we will compare the adoption of the WIF to adoption of the Cape or getting into the Cape and Islands Waste Water Protection Fund. And we would have to use some assumptions on that because it's percent, you know, it's percentage-based added to the room occupancy tax going to the special fund. And we have, are sort of trying to figure out how to get at that. But the numbers for the WIF are in your packet, so, and, but I know you just got them, so.
Yeah, but it showed some significant borrowing allowances by.
Yeah.
I, I'm just wondering, are there different restrictions on how the money can be used between the WIF and the Cape and Islands Water Fund, Water Protection Fund?
I think there might be some.
I think what the biggest restriction is, if I understand the Cape and Island Water Protection Fund correctly, is that that is, they use the same formula as SRF eligible projects. So the, the, why, excuse me, the Water Infrastructure Improvement Fund, I don't believe, because it's internal and it's here, we could set the criteria on what projects we were going to use to, to fund with the, the revenue that's raised.
Okay. So hopefully we'll get you some more information on that, but be thinking about whether or not we want to put that forward. Okay, we added the potential acceptance of Mass General Law, Chapter 83, Section 16G. This would allow low-income individuals to be provided with sewer fee increase assistance, and there are prerequisites to it. You, you need to meet certain thresholds. The assessor has done a little research on this and estimates that very few people on the island would be eligible for this, but it couldn't hurt to put it forward. It's just perhaps one more thing that people might be able to take advantage of at some point, so I don't think it can hurt. Good with it?
Yeah.
Right, real estate related. We added the potential authorization for the Select Board to enter into long-term leases with solar vendors for municipal property. Since, I said still reviewing there, I think since then, I've gotten actually a draft article from town council or a little bit of draft wording. And it basically, we would, property as we come, you know, as solar vendors perhaps express interest, we would have this kind of blanket approval. You'd obviously be very cautious about entering into it, and we come with lots of research and recommendation, but it would be easier to enter into a long-term lease. And it may not even be a lease that, I, I, it was a little unclear to me. How many leases are we really talking about? Probably not a lot, maybe, I don't even know, one or two.
When are we going to meet with the land bank to finalize our proposal for the milestone rotary project? Since they're here.
That, well, that was going to be a, a staff level with, I think, you, and I have not scheduled it yet, but.
Okay, because I'm just thinking, things are looming because we have to set the warrant by January 22nd.
Yes, I know.
Okay, just a reminder.
I know, thank you.
For everyone.
Got it. So people generally okay with the concept of the long-term solar lease thing?
Yeah, sorry, could you just remind me, currently, we're limited to short-term?
Five years.
Five years.
Without a town meeting vote.
Okay, right.
Okay. Other than citizen articles, the last, last meeting on November 20th, we were still getting them certified, so we now know they're 53. And I have on my pending list of things to do to review them all, and all the non-zoning ones, anyway, and try to come up with what sort of impact they might have. And the department heads are also in the process of doing that. I've heard back from several, several of them as to how it might impact their departments. So I'm, my intent is to put all of that in some kind of a report for you all and the FinCom as you're proceeding on.
And, I mean, we had opinions from town council that some of them were not legally drafted.
So I'm not going to spend a lot of time on those.
And the FinCom has that information, too, right?
Just while we're on them, I, I'm considering putting an amendment on the Val Oliver that's talking about taking the 40-foot down to 30, and I was thinking of making an amendment. I'm gonna talk to John Giorgio when he's, when he's healed and see if we, if it, put it back to 40 for affordable housing. I don't, you know, affordable how, units, I don't know how, I have to figure out the definition and how I word it, how to do it. But, you know, I think that's the right place to have the height and have the density, but I'd like the density pointed to permanently affordable or workforce housing. So how do you define those?
Some percentage of them.
Percentage of that building therefore goes to that, and I think that would be entirely appropriate. So we'd be giving up something, you know, if we give up sort of taller height, but that's the place to have it, and we'd be getting back more sort of year-round worker or affordable units.
Is that something that would be as a, as a citizen making that amendment, or?
If I could, if and when I get it done, if you guys would like the smart, it would be great, but, you know, I'm still working on it.
That was a zoning article? Would the planning board?
I think it was a citizens' article.
But would the, but would the planning board be putting forward a motion that they would take up that one?
They may, I have to get it together. Yeah, they might. I think they could.
I think that is it that was new since you last reviewed this. So with any luck, I will have a draft warrant for you, God willing, by January 8th.
Okay. I, sorry, oh, that was it. Committee reports? Who wants to go first?
I can start. The Affordable Housing Trust met yesterday, and I think one of the longest discussions we had was on the fourth goal coming from the board of incentivizing year-round rentals. And we brought up some of the things that we had discussed in the past and thought about things like a very simple calculator, maybe on our website, maybe some other form that would help people do the math, understand what year-round rental would look like versus short, seasonal rentals. We discussed who we're targeting. We think there's two different markets. There's the seasonal renters who might have the ability for year-round rental, and then there's the year-round. What are the different incentives? How do we approach those two different sort of clients? And then I think we also were looking at ways to get at it through zoning, what are our options? And we decided that we'd like to start with understanding tertiary dwellings a little bit more. That was one that was an effort to increase some of the affordable housing, and we want to understand how that worked, a little more of the history, see if we can build on that, see if there's anything we can improve there, but then also start to consider other zoning. And we had. And we had, we went through the citizen warrant articles and had a look at how some of those apply to affordable housing and thought about how those different zoning approaches might be positive or negative impact for that. There is also going to be an event possibly at Dreamland or Atheneum with the ripple effect. So another conversation video. Brooke just left. I can't remember the date, but I will keep you posted. That's it.
We had a Capcom FinCom Select Board meeting. Was it this week? When was that, Monday? Wow, seems like a long time ago. It was only about 20 minutes, but it was, it was just good to get everybody together in a room, if they had any questions, and handed out these long sheets of every project that, that were, that we, that we looked at over the last five months. And so everybody can kind of get a, a sense of kind of what's, what's coming forward. It's a big piece of paper with, with small print writing on it. And there was a couple of good questions of, you know, kind of what you were alluding to before, Matt, about kind of institutional knowledge, what happened before. Some questions that came up from a FinCom member was, what was past the last couple of years? And so we can look at that versus what's, what's here, so.
And what's dropped off.
Yeah, what's dropped off and why, and that's, that's a ton of work for staff at Capcom. We won't be able to get to all of it, but I think what I would have said there, if I would have answered, was what are the five or six, or weren't two areas, or five or six items that you'd want more detail on? That's, that's, that's my Capcom report. We have one more meeting this Thursday, kind of finalizing it all, and then our chair, Stephen Welch, does that great report that'll come out in January for us to look at.
And that was the first time that we've done that joint meeting, correct?
Did we do it last year?
We did it last year as well?
Was it separate last year, though, or was it at this meeting? I'm not sure it was, I can't remember.
Yeah, it might have been during.
I think it was during a meeting.
I, I think the joint meetings are helpful. One thing afterwards that I realized, I think it would be great to have a refresher on just briefly where some of those ratings come from.
It's funny you said that, because I almost stood up and said, can you give a brief process of where we started in August? What, what's a Rory? How do we go through? How do we judge it? How do we do up or down? Because it's, it's a little complicated when you look at the sheets.
And I think when you do it once a year for, if you're not part of it, I think just having that quick little refresher would be, would be helpful. But I thought it was, again, I think the joint meetings are great.
Yeah, and I mean, just, the scoring is interesting, because you look at it and it's like, well, some of these things got like 40%. And it seems like the highest was like in the mid 70s. So it's like, what, what does it take to get 100% rating or a, like, you know, and 95 and, and A?
Right.
Kind of thing.
If you look at that Rory sheet, there's things in there that says like scheduled replacement and infrastructure. If it's not an infrastructure project, you wouldn't, you would never get any points on that. So there's really no way to get in the 90s.
Okay.
But Stephen Welch is your guy to, to explain it, maybe Brian, too.
Don, you must have been tough as a student, as a kid. I wanted 95.
95, that's it.
I went to a school that didn't have grades, too, for high school.
That's even better.
I went to a school in Canada where an 80 is an A, so.
I have a couple of things. First off, thumbs up for the speed humps on Newtown Road. They've made a appreciable difference already, and we're not, at this time of year, the cars don't, hadn't seemed to speed quite as much as they did this summer. And you can see people already slowing down. I think that's great. I attended, I've got a few things, because I had a list last week and we were so far behind. I attended the WPI presentations. One of the things that was amazing to me was the Maticet, they had a, they had, they had taught, asked all, I had a, I don't know what do you call it when you ask people questions? Maticet had, I'm having a brain fart. Anyway, so, there we go, survey. They surveyed their residents in Maticet, and over 80% of them said that they wanted to have the setbacks looked at and tightened and made more restrictive, because they're worried about the impact of climate change and how they're gonna be able to accept the water or get around it. And they see, you know, they're already facing issues now with other houses being built there. So it was interesting that they, and they are, the Maticet residents are very vocal and are very coordinated. They send out regular messages to each other, monthly newsletters. They are very politically astute. And that was just, that was just one thing that jumped out at me, because normally you think it's the other way around. And in Maticet, it isn't, which is kind of interesting. I had a question, if, you know, we received something this afternoon, probably haven't looked at it, about the exit here in this driveway from the parking lot. It had been very convenient and it, it kept a lot of traffic from having to go back out onto Old South Road to take a left, which you can't do, or to take a right. We received the reasons why it has changed. I think we should have that as an agenda item at some point and discuss it. Good planning connects, connects grids and, and makes more opportunities for people to, to connect different ways. It doesn't take them away. Suburban style takes it away and channels everything onto one street, and that's the street that we have our biggest problem with. So I would like to see, if we have to improve this road, we should improve it. We should do what we have to do, but we should have that open.
There were some questions about zoning permitting and so forth, and maybe we could find out what would need to be changed to address that, to make it legal.
Exactly, and that, that would be, yeah, so that's why I'd like to see it come back up. I think it's important enough. Let me see, Community Crack has met a couple of times, Coastal Resiliency. And there's a library online, I think I've mentioned this before, with a bunch of data. We're waiting for a study from Malone and McPerrom about, oh, the various ways to deal with this that's overdue. We're hoping that that shows up soon. And one of the things that came up is, was a discussion of how do we comment on some things that are current? Like, I don't think we'll have a resiliency plan for a couple of years, but then there are things that are current, like we, like I discussed a little earlier tonight. And so we're sort of, I think we'll talk about that again next week, you know, should there be issues that they, that might impact it? How do we talk about it? We all received a packet from Joe Farrell that was showing, he had a proposal, he has a company that, that salvages huge ships that got stuck in play all around the world. And he had noticed in the, in doing his business that these ships would trap sand in some places, and then when they took away, the sand would spread back out. So he is now monitoring it here on island in a couple of places, and he is suggesting that you could sink, you know, containers, they're not containers, but basically something that's shaped like a container ship would carry, sink that and use that to trap sand and release sand. You know, I think it's an interesting, you know, we've got it in our packet, it's an interesting concept. I think that the coastal resiliency, we want to understand the sediment transfer as it exists now, before you kind of interrupted it. But I think it's, you know, sort of worth reading what we received in doing that. I sent something to Don a couple of weeks ago, Sidewalk Committee, if that, in my understanding, about a year ago, was that we were, they were gonna insert, we were gonna insert the Historical Commission into those, into the policy. To date, they haven't met. Hopefully, they will, if they're not going to.
They're meeting in early January.
Beautiful. If it's early January, then I'm done. Thank you. And then the final one is, we're talking about parking downtown and, you know, and there's, but maybe there's going to be a study and all this. And, you know, that's fine, I don't know what, what's gonna happen with that. But I was driving down Center Street where I grew up the other day, and there was a new FedEx truck, not to beat up on FedEx, but normally the FedEx trucks are sort of reasonable and they can navigate. This one was, you know, 10 feet longer. It was trying to back up onto Steps Lane, and the driver was going up and down on the sidewalk in front of the Congressional Church. And I'm thinking to myself, why would you bring a truck like that, a larger truck to Nantucket, when it doesn't fit already? So I, I just, you know, we do have the ability, I think, to limit that, you know, we have some ability to limit the, the weights of trucks on certain roads. The state has given us certain abilities that other places don't necessarily have. I think that the trucks, especially those that are bopping in and out all the time, should fit our streets, not the other way around. I, I think a lot of them do, but when I see the trend toward ones that don't, I think it's a mistake. It's, you know, so anyway, it was just something that really jumped out at to me, and I didn't want to let it go. And that's it.
I don't have any committee reports, but just kind of a comment on the minutes that we approved today from June was when we handed over the African Meeting House over to the Cape and Island DA, and I just wanted to see if we could get an update in the near future.
That would be great. Get an update on that. I had a CBC meeting yesterday. It's generally uneventful at this point in the year. We've already got our citizens' warrant articles in, but, you know, just projects getting completed and moving along, which is great. We have a senior center meeting tomorrow. Unfortunately, we don't have the final report from the consultants. We've tried, been trying to find out the exact status of that. And we did have a, a good meeting yesterday in regard to Harper Place, and we'll have that on an agenda for all of us to discuss on January 15th. So I think that's all I have.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Reposed.